It's not.
So, so if I, if I could interrupt, the, the council sets the compensation for the secretary. So, I, I believe that the mayor's motion would be to establish this a salary for a temporary acting secretary, equivalent to a prorated monthly amount, equivalent with what has been paid in the past. And that that be for a period, I would say just, just now that you're in September, a period through December thirty-one, twenty twenty. That seems to make sense.
That, that's a good idea. Let's budget it for that, an amount specific to that period. Is that what you're suggesting?
It, it is an annual appointment and that enables the planning board now to, to maybe Mr. Moore, maybe somebody else, uh, fill that position for the acting secretary to complete, uh, this, this annual period.
Um, are we open for discussion on this?
No. Well, there's a motion. That, is that your motion, Mayor?
Can't hear you.
Well, Mr. Dilch is right. To have a discussion, really, it, there should be a motion on the floor.
Bringing up an issue that's been implied in motion.
I'm fine with that.
I didn't hear anything you just said.
Okay, so, so the bottom line is, there can be discussion. I think, um, Ms. Owen has a comment.
Okay.
Mrs. Owen, you have something?
Well, it's part of a discussion, so I don't know if I should bring it up or not.
I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna make a motion to set the compensation for the secretary of the planning board to be twenty-five-hundred dollars a year annually, in which it will be prorated for the months that are remaining for this year. Is there a second?
So that would be eight hundred thirty-three dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second for a discussion.
Go ahead. Discussion.
Well, it, it's, I, it's pretty convenient that you're bringing that twenty-five-hundred dollars up as compensation when you and I were discussing finances and you and I did not see eye to eye on that twenty-five-hundred dollars. Now you want to throw that twenty-five-hundred dollars in there to get that, what you wanted in the first place.
I don't, I don't believe that's fair.
You can't keep your words out.
I don't believe that's fair. I, I thought I said something when I spoke earlier tonight, that we would have a compensation somewhere around twenty-five-hundred dollars, even though I was gonna bring it up.
Well, that's what you had to, that's what you did actually say to me earlier tonight. But when you and I were discussing salary ordinances and we did not see eye to eye on that twenty-five-hundred-dollar minimum, you, you said to me that I was giving you a hard time and I said, no, it's not me giving you a hard time, it is me not seeing eye to eye with you.
We had that conversation tonight.
We did not have that conversation tonight. We had that conversation, you and I, on the phone, the night of the storm, before my electric went out.
I believe that what we had the conversation about, Mrs. Owen, and I'm pretty sure that the conversation was, we weren't gonna do any salary ordinance or resolution until we are clearly certain about what the compensation is going to be for the new clerk coming in.
Correct. And you and I had already just, go ahead, I'm sorry, finish.
It had nothing to do with, um, compensation for the planning board secretary. That was never, never subject for compensation.
When you and I, yes, it absolutely was. When you and I spoke on the phone that night, you and I did not see eye to eye on that figure with the planning board. You wanted it to be twenty-five-hundred to another amount, and I said I did not agree with that.
I really don't recall that. I just really don't. So how we got above, I don't recall that conversation, not even a fraction of it.
Well, I can tell you that on the heels of what Mrs. Owen claimed to be that conversation back when, she said the range that she wanted was twenty-five-hundred to forty-two-hundred dollars a year, that the outgoing land use secretary was said was, uh, had a stipend or however you want to call it, was compensated at forty-two-hundred dollars a year. And given that in recent years, and especially in this COVID year, there may only be three or four or five meetings, twenty-five-hundred dollars is a minimum, is probably rich, given the city's current fiscal dilemma. I didn't make that up and I don't think she pulled it out of thin air at the time that she brought me up to speak on it, but I think it was a product of the discussion she had with you.
Let me tell you what the facts are. The facts are this. Previous city clerk that we had was also the secretary to the planning board and she was given a set salary. When she was giving the appointment back in twenty-seventeen, she was given a salary of forty-five-thousand dollars a year. That was inclusive of her, um, position with the city, council, and also for the secretary. Prior to her getting that, she was given some type of compensation in the past, which was perhaps forty-two-hundred dollars. She had a consolidated amount of money in which she had the responsibility of both to do. And we have had a number of meetings that have been canceled over the years. And that's when I said something about that the compensation is too high for the minimal amount of meetings that you were having, because when there's no application, basically the meetings are being adjourned, canceled. So, we're paying, we're paying a lot of money for meetings that we're not even having. That is the conversation that I've been getting.
Mr. Solicitor, is the motion on the floor for eight hundred thirty-three dollars for Mr. Moore for the balance of the calendar year to act as land use secretary?
If that's what the prorated amount were, twenty-five-hundred, for the lower twenty-five-hundred dollar amount, yes.
Expiring on December thirty-first.
Correct.
May we please vote that?
Not necessarily for Mr. Moore, but for the, uh, for the salary compensation of the secretary.
Exactly. And that's what you and I did not see eye to eye on, and that is why you are trying to throw this thing right now to get what you want and not have to discuss it with me.
Mrs. Owen, I'm telling you too, I just do not recall that conversation. What was, what was the amount of money that you wanted to get?
I did not want it to be twenty-five-hundred to forty-two-hundred. I said that I felt more comfortable doing it more like fifteen-hundred to forty-two, because I needed to be, do more research as far as how much they're normally compensated, considering that we do not have that many applications or questions usually ever, and we do not normally have that many meetings, and when we do have meetings, they're usually no more than forty-five minutes, the max was an hour, but I went.
That's about accurate. I care what you said. The meetings are drawn, few and far and in between, and they only seem to be about an hour or less. Yes, you're correct about that. I just don't ever recall that there was a conversation about a salary range. I'm sorry, but I just don't.
So?
I, I don't know how to respond other than if I don't recall and if I don't, and I clearly don't remember that was a discussion with the secretary's position. What can I say?
Mrs. Owen?
Yes.
How do you feel about eight hundred thirty-three dollars for the balance of the year? Is that number satisfactory to you? I understand what you're saying about we establish this as a practice, maybe it, it blows out your, uh, you know, your momentum towards reducing the, the minimum. Would you rather it be a lesser amount? Because the odds are there's only gonna be one or two meetings in the balance of the year.
There's definitely gonna be one, maybe two, we would think.
My math here, if I can say something, somebody get a calculator and I'll do this again. It comes to two hundred and eight dollars a meeting.
It's eight, it, Mr., Mr. Dilch is correct. It's eight hundred and thirty-three dollars for the rest of the year. And you gotta remember-
Eight hundred and thirty-three dollars a, a meeting, like, glad I did do it.
Eight hundred and thirty-three dollars for the entire period. Um, so, and you gotta remember, you gotta give your planning board time to get their advertising out for a secretary. And, and it's certainly very kind of Mr. Moore to volunteer to do it at all, um, because it's a tough position to fill on short notice.
Look a busy person. Mr. Moore, you feel I have something that you could take care of?
Yes.
Do I have an issue with it?
Nope.
So there's a motion, there's a second for the compensation, about twenty-five-hundred dollars a year for the, um-
That, that, here we go, yes.
Why don't, why don't, can I suggest you amend your motion that, that there be an allowance of eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents for a, a, an acting secretary to the planning board through December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
And, and, Mr. Lafferty, I'm sorry, I, your, your initial remedy, Mrs. Owens need better than that one does. I like two hundred and eight dollars a meeting through December thirty-first, if it is to extend beyond that, it has to come to council. And through that period, we'll pay two hundred and eight dollars a meeting.
No, system matters, schematics. I said prorated to the most-
No, it's actually not, because when you say that prorated and we vote on that, so then your argument is when we do the salary ordinance, is salary ordinance, that you're gonna be like, oh, we paid, we paid him a prorated of twenty-five-hundred, so I, I don't find, I don't like that.
I like Mr. Lafferty's idea. Two hundred and eight dollars a meeting.
Per meeting, if we have a meeting.
Basically, that's what I'm saying. That's just two hundred and eight dollars a meeting. So we have one that's coming up, and we'll probably have one coming up, and I could, but. Uh, so there's a motion, there's a second. Let's have a roll call.
For what, for what amount of money?
I make a motion for two hundred and eight dollars a month for the compensation with the planning board secretary for the balance-
A meeting.
Two hundred and eight per meeting.
Hundred and eight per meeting.
Two hundred and eight per meeting.
Two hundred and eight dollars per meeting. Excuse me. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Vanessia?
There's, um, any other new business, council?
Yes, I have one, one more item. Uh, Mr. Olson and I interviewed a candidate for deputy city clerk last night who's going to work part-time, who's deeply experienced. Um, nearby, he's not an Estelman resident, he's a Newfield resident. Uh, he seemed to match up to our need very well. In fact, he seemed to be grossly overqualified for what we would be asking him to do. He seems to be very flexible and he was willing to work for the compensation that we discussed at that time. Uh, I move, I make a motion that we
and, and-
focus the council on me for a second interview with him next week or the week after. He gave us some dates that are good for him.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that date will be for what, next Wednesday, or what was it?
Next Thursday or the following Tuesday.
Right. That's why I keep me-
The smallest dog, the biggest man.
Yeah.
Next, Mr. Bell, next Thursday or next Thursday?
The following Tuesday. So it'll be the tenth or the fifteenth? Is that right?
With this, with council's pleasure, because Mr. uh, Moore's gonna have to pub, put a publication in the paper as to what date we're doing, so we can't say we're gonna do this today, but we have to put the date-
I like Thursday the tenth, let's do it. Let's speak with this guy and move it along.
Thursday the tenth for everybody?
Without objection.
You plan August, you say September?
No, it's September.
Tenth, on a Thursday night.
Yes, sir. What time? Seven?
Seven.
Open phone. We'll meet over here? It's gonna be closed at the public, so we'll just meet here?
Just so that, so, I was gonna say, well, we're gonna have to convene a Zoom meeting so that you can then adjourn to executive session.
How about we just simply do the telephone conference, because when we all have our iPads in here, it seems to be a lot of reverberating. That was the, uh, that was what happened when we were all in this one room that time.
You can, if you, do you have a conference line?
I do, I do. Mac, you will, excuse me, Mr. Olson, do you recall? Uh, you were the one that set it up?
On the phone last time.
Yeah, we did the, we did the phone conference, right? You were the one that set it up?
Actually, uh, uh, this is, uh, this is, Mrs. Kent did.
Well, this is, we're only go, this is, Mr. Solicitor, this is for a minute or two, long enough for us to say the flag, so we can go into close, correct?
Correct.
And come out of close and, and adjourn, correct?
And adjourn, correct.
Okay. Otherwise, we'll all be there and we'll, we'll space, we'll wear masks, and, and it'll be a, you know, we'll be present for it.
But you have to, you have to make it available to the public too. Now, I think the restrictions are such that you can have a twenty-five percent capacity in here. Um, if I'm not mistaken.
For the public portion?
For everybody included. You can have twenty-five percent as long as they're socially distanced. So-
So the public could come in for the first minute or two minutes and then you would ask them to leave?
If they really wanted to come in to see you make a motion to adjourn to the end of your session, I'd say, I mean, God bless them. Uh, but you could have twenty-three people in this room, assuming you can socially distance.
That's including the members of council, correct?
That is correct. And also the clerk, and if the solicitor is here-
Officer, right.
That's correct.
Okay. So meeting on the tenth at seven o'clock, if, that's gonna be in person then?
Yes, in person.
And then we'll also have the Zoom available for, for-
I strongly recommend you do the telephone conference line, because if we all have our iPads in here, we're gonna be getting tremendous reverberation like we had the last time.
We would only need one iPad, right? One?
We only need one. Okay, whatever hour?
I, I thi, I think what Mr. Olson used the last time was the Zoom conference line. If I'm not-
I think so.
Yes.
If, if the city does not have a conference capability, I have a conference capability, that I, I can certainly lend to the city.
So you'll be here for the, I don't know.
I don't necessarily have to be here, I just need to set up the conference line.
So you, so you know you'll have to be here, obviously, through the roll call and all that? So you'll, um, have the capabilities of setting up the conference line?
I can set up the conference line from anywhere. And I'll give the number to Brad, so that he can put it in the notice in case the public would like to, um, participate. Now that I'm the official technical consultant, is there additional compensation?
We're still on a new business, so maybe you should bring that up.
I kind of recall that was in contract.
But I, I, I can lend our law firm's conference bridge to you folks.
Any other new business? It's not, uh, we need to make a little, a little meeting.
Mr. Moore has something.
Uh, two things. Um, my computers start to, uh, begin slowing down again. And I talked with the IT person today. And it's a problem using the Windows ten on older computers. And, um, Mr. Olson, if you want to chime in, but, uh, it'd be my recommendation to purchase three new computers. They're twelve hu, approximately twelve hundred apiece, which includes the, the setup. It will be for the CFO, the clerk, and the tax office. Before we start running into some, any other issues, it was the recommendation by the IT person not to put Windows ten on older computers. We had to do that because the GIP had requirements about cyber. But, uh, I'd rather be proactive than, than have something crash. I mean, uh, last month, something happened with my computer and I couldn't even get on. Uh, and I had to call the IT person, try to, uh, work that out. So it does have to be done tonight, but I, I'm putting it out there so that we can make a decision. I'll find the money somehow and-
Mr. Mr. Moore, yeah, I, I'm pretty sure the technology committee decided like six months ago to reevaluate right around now, uh, the situation again. So can you, uh, send over the quotes so we can, we can look at it again and, and let's get the ball rolling?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can do that. I'll send, send out the quotes.
I would say, um, just, because it seems like, anymore, nothing can go by without me saying something. It might be, uh, if you could get physical quotes that meet your need and that are satisfactory to Mr. Olson, council could probably vote it next Thursday the tenth, when we meet again. We could do that, won't we?
Okay. I will put that in the ad as far as conducting any other business, so I will do that and I'll stay in touch with, uh, Mr. Olson about it.
If the last thing does, um, part, you need to be specific when you put the advertisement in, that we're gonna be perhaps starting on that issue, or can you just put, or any other city business. I know I've been told in the past, or any other city business, and I've also been told, it's gotta be specific. So it all depends on which attorney that you speak to.
Well, he, here's the, i- is this at the special meeting?
It's a special meeting to conduct, I'm gonna talk about the app of personnel and then any other business.
The, the general practice is to be as specific as you can, um, and if you're posting an agenda. The law is that, once you properly advertise a meeting, then the public is on notice that any public business might be conducted at that meeting. Uh, so you're not limited to what's on the agenda per se, but the general-
You're not limited as to what's on the advertisement.
Right. That's correct.
So if you want to bring this up, you can. Although it's gotta be on the agenda to do this, you just don't simply pull it out of your- I think that that would be a good policy to issue law, uh, votes to purchase something without it really being on the agenda.
As I said, the law is that a properly advertised meeting, uh, at, at that meeting, any public business can be conducted. The general practice is that when you post an agenda, that you be as specific as you can and as inclusive as you can.
I mean, it's been, it's been introduced at this time in this fashion by an unelected member of council because it's an emergent need.
Say that again, Mr. Dilch.
It has been introduced at this time, in this fashion, by an unelected member of council because it is an emergent need.
Unelected member of council, not being-
I got the impression Mr. Moore's computer's about to give up the goat. He needs a nu-
We're getting this from the recommendation of the, uh, chief finance officer in acting clerk. Who's a city official. Is there any other raw new business? If not, we need to, uh, open the meeting to the public?
One more thing. Uh, Mr. Moore, can you please make sure that the, uh, agenda for this meeting gets on the website, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I did want to say that you mentioned before about a conflict city engineer. I looked in the book, uh, number ten slash twenty-twenty, contract for conflict city engineer, and it was C and E associates, served as a conflict city engineer. I just wanted to-
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Make a motion, open the meeting to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you're both?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Pope has his hand up. Um, actually, let's, let's Sandy Hickerson speak, because she asked earlier on in the chat.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trying to follow everything, Mr. Pope.
Uh, uh, we're, we're all doing what we can with what we got here.
Okay, I'm going to then, uh, the mayor has stepped out for personal needs, so I'm gonna turn, I'm gonna ask Ms. Dickerson, Ms. Dickerson, if she could please unmute and, and provide us with her input.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, yes, um, my name is Sandy Hickerson. I am a board member and the Atlantic County representative for the New Jersey Second Amendment Sanctuary. I was there in person before the pandemic hit, uh, March fourth. I presented the idea of Estelmadder passing a resolution to become a Second Amendment-friendly town. Uh, we had tabled it back then and I recently went through, uh, your agenda, uh, back. Uh, it was dated June third, and I saw that you had discussed it and tabled it again, so I wanted to bring it back up again uh, for your discussion, your input. I was hoping that you would go forward with making this resolution. Um, I just had a few things, uh, wrote down, um, in light of what has happened over the past several months, uh, with the COVID pandemic. You know, the Antifa, Black Ti, Black Lives Matters, and some elected officials wanting to defund the police. Uh, people are so much more concerned, not only for their country, but for their livelihood, their family, their well-being. Uh, with the pandemic, businesses are closing, causing financial difficulty at home where bills are piling up, along with threat of losing their homes as well. Um, the American citizens, with all of this, the American citizens are, they're arming themselves. And here are some stats from the National Rifle Association. Nearly five million new gun owners in twenty-twenty. Five million. Early in September. Uh, forty percent of the firearm sales were first-time buyers. Fifty-eight percent of the firearm sales were black Americans. Forty percent are women. Firearms sales have nearly doubled. And the ammunition sales are up a hundred and thirty-nine percent from two thousand and nineteen. I hope, um, that you're listening to the American people. That you're hearing the American people, the low-abiding citizens. This is something that's very important. It's the Second Amendment, it's part of our constitution. It's a human right that we have to, to own a firearm. Um, due to the virus, many towns have placed this resolution on hold. It is my hope that this information convinces you the importance of moving forward with this resolution as soon as possible. I'm asking you to please do not wait. I urge you to pass this resolution, um, either, either now, if you have one ready, uh, or at your next council meeting. Um, you know, I know there was concern about the red flag law. And I want to bring up to you that, you know, the red flag law is unconstitutional because you are guilty until proven innocent. And that's not the way that America works. And you know, it's not about the firearm. It's not about the tool that you use when you want to do something bad, right? So people, some people see a firearm as a weapon. To me, it's not a weapon. I have no cruel intention with my firearm. And I hope that makes sense to you. So it's not the tool that you use, or I'm sorry, it is the tool that you use. You know, some people use a knife, you can use a baseball bat, you can use a pillow, you can use your bare hands. So it's not about the firearm. So I hope you, you keep that in mind. The resolution that we left there for you to look at and to consider, um, was a sample. You know, you can, um, suit it to, to meet your needs for, for Estelmadder. Um, but I ask that you please look at this resolution again and, and, and pass a resolution making your town a Second Amendment-friendly town. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
I yield to Judy.
Well, I have to respond, um, about this resolution for a Second Amendment city, because I do think that it's a very complicated issue. And I think that we need to make it available to the citizens of the town, maybe in the, in the quarterly newsletter. Something that they can actually see what's going to be voted on. I would greatly appreciate that, um, the five of you don't just take, um, one point review and that you open it up to the citizens. Yes, if all, if the citizens in our, our town have had a chance to read it and, and want that for, to give that message. I do have to disagree with this defunding police. That is a, um, propaganda term. It's not, it's not correct. Some of this information of this, um, I don't agree with, put it that way. So it's a very complicated subject, and I hope you will take it under as much advisement as you can, as important as it is. Thank you. Oh, and I did want to say, I, if I were in a live meeting, I would have said something about Councilman Hughes's resignation, that I wanted to thank him for the years that he dedicated to this city and that he's caring and he's doing his very best for the people of the city. best for the people of the city was very, um, was very meaningful to me, as all of you are doing. But I think that if we had had a live meeting, I would've said it then. So, um, I'm saying it now and, um, thank you.
Thank you.
May I, may I say that the resolution is available online? You can go to the website, to the New Jersey Second Amendment Sanctuary website. Our resolution is there. It's, there's also a link on our Facebook.